Good morning, everyone, and welcome. This time I call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for September the 28th to order, and Marshall, if you'll bring the list forward. Silence your phones if you still have them on. Looking around for elected people, Steve Caker elected. No, he's married to an elect. Scott told me never to try to be funny, but see, it's working. So...
Low percentage.
We are glad to have everyone here and participate in county government this morning. We've got a pretty big agenda. We're so honored to have Chaplain Joey Meeks, Pastor and Dr. Joey Meeks. He's the chaplain, of course, with the Sheriff's Office to come and lead us in invocation and lead us in the pledge to flag also.
Let's all stand and we'll do the pledge first. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will join us in prayer. Father, we love you and we thank you so much. And Lord, we've got such a beautiful day to enjoy your creation, but not only that, here at home in Paulding County, Father, we thank you for allowing us to be born and raised here, Father. I pray God as we come today, we heavy hearts with the Dallas PD, I pray God that you'd comfort their hearts, comfort their family today as only you can, Father. I pray, Lord, that we pray for this COVID, Father, and everything that's going on, all that's sick, all the deputies and officers and fire that have it now. I pray that you touch them, our doctors, our nurses, the hospital staffs, Father. I just pray God that you strengthen them for the work that lays ahead for them, Father. Praying God that you'd just touch, and I pray that you'd build a huge hedge around all of our first responders, Father, and keep them safe. We pray for our commissioners as they make decisions, Father. I pray God that you'd be real to them. I pray that you'd touch them and lead them and guide them. And we'll ask all this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, Joey. September 14th, 2021 work session minutes and the September 14th, 2021 board meeting minutes and the September 20th, 2021 called meeting minutes are all available for your review. We have a segment in Team Paulding this morning. I guess we're going to learn how to box here, the uppercut boxing class at Mount Tabor Park. Let's enjoy.
My name is Zach Tubbs. I've been with the county since November of last year, serving as a program coordinator here for the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. Well, our boxing program is no sparring. We don't have a ring, so it's more of an old school way to learn the fundamentals of boxing. We have a couple of different standing bags that we use. We use focus mitts. The kids each have their own pair of gloves. The kids have loved the program so far. We started our first offering for this session in August, and we reached max enrollment. The kids enjoy coming in here and getting a workout in, working as a team, and of course, getting to punch things. So we have three main focal points in this program. The first is to teach the kids the basic fundamentals of boxing and get them comfortable moving around, punching, and then also defending themselves. The second point is strength and conditioning based. We want the kids to learn just basic strength and conditioning movements, compound movements, and essentially just to be active. And the third is what we call confidence building sessions. And this is basically where I talk with the kids about different issues. We talk about hard work, determination, teamwork, and we really just try to build their confidence and get the kids to understand, you know, their value and their worth and just to continue to just invest in the program and see the rewards as they start to pay off. To the parents of Paulding County, I would strongly encourage you to consider signing your kid up for this program. You know, it's a great way to build confidence, build self-esteem, build their cardiovascular health, and learn a little bit about boxing along the way. We would love to have you come join our uppercut crew.
So he works for you, Michael? You don't talk back to him, do you?
He's a rather large young man. You know, Zach's probably 6'5" and well over 300 pounds, but he's a giant teddy bear. Those kids just love to be around him, and he loves being with them. He's one of several outstanding programmers that we have on our staff. Like he said, he's been with us for 10 months, but what he didn't share in that is that he came to us with that, and he actually secured a grant from USA Boxing to buy that equipment. So he's doing a lot of good things for us. We're proud of him and what he's doing. Thanks for showing that, by the way. That's good stuff.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good to have Vicki with us also. Since we don't have any invited guests, but I would say that Kelly Comstock, sitting there in the front row, has been invited. You didn't just show up, did you? All right. So glad to have you here, Kelly. We don't have any bid awards, no reports from committees departments, no one has signed up for agenda items. Under the consent agenda, item number two is to adopt community development job classification for building code and abatement enforcement officer, and Ms. Littman's responsible for that. Item number three is to adopt information technology job classification for systems administrator. Mr. Lyons is responsible for that. And item number four is to approve the Paulding County Transit Title VI Plan, and Ms. Pollard's responsible. So I would ask any of the commissioners if you'd like to move any of these to regular Hearing no one interested in that, we'll just leave them on the consent agenda and under old business, none this morning. Getting into the new business, item number five is discuss action to approve Paulding County's Hazard Mitigation Plan update for 2021 through 2026 and to adopt Resolution 21-27. And we're glad to have Mr. Stephen Dooley, EMA Director, here with us, so he's going to explain this revised...
Yes, sir. Good morning. It's good to see everybody here. All right. So for our hazard mitigation plan, our agency recently completed the update of the 2016 Paulding County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is required by FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. This is a requirement that they have on every jurisdiction every five years. The update involved 42 people who comprised our Hazard Mitigation Update Committee, which was represented by Paulding County, City of Braswell, City of Dallas, and City of Hiram. The committee also included representatives from other organizations, such as Kennesaw State University, Metro Atlanta Ambulance, and Wellstar Paulding Hospital. There were also several other non-governmental organizations within Paulding County that participated with the update. We held six committee meetings and two virtual public meetings were held. Those public meetings were held during 2020, during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, so those were switched to a virtual format. The Hazard Mitigation Plan essentially identifies hazards facing the county. We perform a full risk assessment of those hazards, review previous mitigation strategies, and identify new mitigation strategies for the county and the municipalities. Essentially, both GMA and FEMA had received our completed plan, and those have been conditionally approved. The condition to the full approval is as far as having the county to adopt the new Hazard Mitigation Plan and then also having the cities to also adopt. Once we have adoption of the plan at the local level, we resubmit to the state and to federal, and then essentially we would receive our formal approval there. Now, this Hazard Mitigation Plan, it is a requirement that each jurisdiction has to have a Hazard Mitigation Plan every five years, but there's something that that Hazard Mitigation Plan touches additionally, and actually that's a few things. Disaster assistance, as far as public assistance, individual assistance, that is totally reliant as far as having a Hazard Mitigation Plan in place to begin with. So if you have a jurisdiction that they do not have a current Hazard Mitigation Plan, they are not eligible for disaster assistance. This is something that we've recently seen. We had Tropical Storm Zeta on October 29th, 2020. We did have a current plan. Ours continues right now through 2022. But with that being the case, as having that plan, we were able to reach out to FEMA, put in a formal request. We have already received the first check of two to reimburse our damages that we incurred during that storm. So that's one thing there. Our agency, we have what's referred to as an Emergency Management Performance Grant that we do every year. That is essentially a 100% by FEMA. There's a local match that we do, but there's no monies that we have to pay out of pocket, and that is because we have that Hazard Mitigation Plan. So it's one of those things that this right here, the work that our committee has done, it's definitely in benefit of the county to continue having a Hazard Mitigation Plan. And at this time, I'd just like to yield back if there's any questions.
I was amazed at the number of things that are considered disaster preparation.
Yes, sir.
I had no idea there are that many things that fell in that category.
Yes, sir. And the list of strategies that were identified by our committee, they are, there's no obligation that we have to complete any of those. It just has to be identified in our plan that there's strategies that we can look at when we have funding, when funding is available. And then also, as grants become open from the federal government or from the state government, we are eligible to take on those projects at that time by having those identified in our plan.
Thanks so much, Dan.
All right. Thank you.
Did you hear something? No, I was just going to ask, so there's 42 people on the committee? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. And I have a list, too, as far as county employees. There's another list as far as the city employees that were with us, if you would like for me to provide that to you.
Just a lot of the first.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Appreciate you being here.
All right. Thank you.
Item number six is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Thompson Engineering Incorporated, the amount of $117,320.11 for preliminary engineering design services for the State Route VI business and the West Memorial Drive Intersection Improvement Project located in Post Four. Ms. Erica Parrish is going to share with us about this.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Baker. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item. The Department of Transportation would really like your consideration for a consultant services agreement with Thompson Engineering for the preliminary engineering and design services for the State Route VI business, Buchanan Street at West Memorial Drive Intersection Improvement Project. This project, we requested proposals from four separate engineering firms, with Thompson Engineering being selected out of the selection committee as the most qualified for this improvement project. The rates and overhead have been reviewed and seem to be in line with the past consultant firms that we've used for projects. Currently, the intersection is configured in a two-way stop control. It's a non-standard Y intersection with Buchanan Street entering West Memorial Drive at a skewed angle, which creates a slip ramp onto West Memorial Drive. Conceptually, we've reviewed this project in the past, or this intersection, and a single lane roundabout was determined to be feasible, provide adequate capacity along with improved safety, and provide a better understanding for users for that intersection. This intersection is located in District Post Four and within the city limits of Dallas, and we would like the board's consideration to approve a consultant services agreement with Thompson Engineering in the amount of $117,320.11.
Thanks, Erica.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number seven is action to award a change order to Prime Engineering in the amount of $18,325 for preparation of an environmental information document, EID, a report with associated special studies required for the State Route, for the State Route 92-Hiram Sewer Extension.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The State Route 92-Hiram Sewer Project is being funded by a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission, and we are also, have also applied for a loan from Jifa, a zero-interest-rate loan for five years, and that would be administered through the Jifa program. As part of the process for approval of the loan, Jifa coordinates with the Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division, and EPD is requiring an environmental information document, or as we refer to it in an EID, that is more detailed than any of the environmental analysis we performed with the grant application through the Appalachian Regional Commission. The, so it was not required under the scope of our original document, because at that time, we were only looking at grant funding. What we, after the EID, we get a notice of no significant impact on the project, and then the Jifa board can approve the loan. The VHB is the subconsultant that will be assisting, would be assisting Prime for this work, and the costs will be based on additional actual hours that it takes. We are, we worked with Prime, our staff worked with Prime on their, on the original, on the costs that they had received. They had originally had some cost estimates that were coming in, in the mid-$20,000 range, and we were able to work with them, and they worked with their subs to reduce that to If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. For number eight, it's also Ms. Ashmore, is discuss action to approve Change Order Eight to Arcadis US Inc. for additional services during construction, materials testing, and inspection services, commissioning, and contract closeout services for the Richland Creek Reservoir and the water treatment plant design, and the construction services project in the amount of $391,587 in Post Four.
Thank you. I, we have brought our program manager, Kelly Comstock, with Brown and Caldwell, this morning to provide the details of this item. I was counting, counting years, and Kelly and his team have been under contract for seven years now. He was actually, he predated me on this program, so this, I will just turn this over to Kelly. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here today. I'm sad to say that I think this may be my final presentation of an agenda item to the commission. As you can see, the reservoir is filled. As you know, water is being supplied to the citizens of Paulding County, and so I believe my tenure as program manager is coming to a close. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Lori Ashmore and her incredible team of staff for, you know, really leading through this incredible transition that Paulding County's undergone. And I'd really like to thank the Water and Sewer Advisory Board and the Commissioners, both current and former of both boards. If recollection serves properly, every single agenda item that has come to both of those boards were unanimously supported and approved, and that really shows the vision that you all have as a county, the importance that you placed in this in securing your water independence for the future, and so you're in a very good position moving forward. So for me personally, this has been an honor to serve you. This project is by far the highlight of my career, and I really have enjoyed working with each and every one of you and your staff. Specific to today's agenda item, it is what we do at the end of the program, obviously, is we have a host of contracts that are closed out, and I wanted to take this opportunity to share some good news with you, because oftentimes, when things come to you, it's asking for change order and change orders and more money. But I wanted to highlight sort of a summary of where all of the different components of the program sit. And even with this amendment that's coming in front of you today, there's about $62,000 that we will unbill the project overall based on the individual components. So the overall program is coming in underneath the overall current budget that's established in the contracts, and that's not often that as a commission, you guys get to see that. So I thought I would share that. Really wanted to point out PC Construction and the great job that they've done. As you know, that water treatment plant construction is almost a half of the value of this at $93 million. As you also recall, that's a construction management at-risk contract, which means they have a fiduciary responsibility to look out for the county, and that is indeed what they've done, even though it took them longer to commission than anticipated. At the end of the day, they left money unbilled, and it's not often you see a general contractor that basically leaves money unbilled to the owner. That is indeed the case here, so that is very positive. Specific to the amendment that's in front of us today, in front of you today, Arcadis, as you know, is the engineer of record for the water treatment plant and the reservoir, and they were involved throughout the construction, doing the inspection work, doing the commissioning work. Their contract is set up as a time and materials, on a time and materials basis, where the county compensates them for the work that they perform. The previous contract with them had set an anticipated startup of the water treatment plant in July of 2020. The last year has been a challenge in getting everything up and going for a host of reasons. When the plant started up, there were a series of startup issues that inevitably happened, little gremlins that have to be worked out, so that process took longer than anticipated. Obviously, COVID impacted everything, the schedule of getting everything commissioned. We had some startup teams that were from Canada that actually were blocked from coming into the United States, so as you can imagine, that would delay things as well. In addition, the county had to come up to speed in terms of operating the facility and obtaining qualified staff, and it's great that under Russell Kelly, you guys have an incredible team led by Danny Tatum of qualified operations and maintenance staff. It's very difficult in this environment to find those individuals, and you have a stellar group out there, so you have an A-team. It took some time to build that team, train that team. Arcadis was heavily involved, heavily involved in that. And then finally, the actual approval by the state, where we were optimistic that it would happen relatively quickly. That was actually not the case. It drug out a little bit, but ultimately, we crossed the finish line. And so for the additional services from July of 2020 through where we are currently, that is what this amendment entails. Additionally, there's some additional funding within there. Right now, Arcadis is assisting the county in optimizing how they're running the system, how they're pumping, so there's a little bit of funding to allow them to continue to do that through the end of the year, sort of an as-needed basis. And obviously, if any of those services aren't used, that would remain unbilled. So the total amendment amount for everything is $391,587. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions anyone might have.
Very good backup material, so I think we're all read up on it, and I'm glad to see on the chart here the 62,331. Any other comments? We're going to miss you. I appreciate your long time and endeavor with us here to get our own independent water source, Kelly, and the whole team, Bridge and others that have come out and been integral vital part of our being able to get this completed. So we're very thankful to you.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Once again, thank you for the opportunity.
Item number nine is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with RK&amp;K LLP in the amount of $129,268.56 for preliminary engineering design services for roadway improvement projects on Metromont Road between Rosedale Drive and Angum Road in Post Three. Ms. Erica Parrish is going to brief.
Yes, sir. Good morning again. Again, this is another project that we selected, requested additional consultants to submit proposals on. We had three proposals submitted. RK&amp;K was selected as the most responsive and qualified firm for this project. A little background on the project, most of us have been on Metromont Road, but it is between Rosedale Drive and Angum Road is the section that we're really focusing on today. It's mainly a non-residential section of roadway. Currently, that section between Hiram Business Park and Angum Road is not constructed to meet the county's requirements for a non-residential roadway. In addition, the intersection at Rosedale at Metromont and then Angum at Metromont have various geometric deficiencies. Overall, Paulding County is asking that the board consider selecting this consultant firm and entering into a consultant services agreement with the one company for three really identified projects. The first project is really going to be focusing on the widening of Metromont Road from Angum to the Hiram Industrial Park. The project, of course, will widen Metromont Road to satisfy the county's non-residential standard, to widen it out to 28 feet wide, and associated, within that associated roadway section, we had actually with McNeil Lakeside North Properties entered into a development agreement with Paulding County in July of 2016 to provide some funding for this project in the amount of $84,255. This will help fund the widening of 1,600 feet along Metromont Road to meet the county's non-standard 28-foot roadway section with curb and gutter from Angum Road to the existing 28-foot wide section of the roadway, and this funding from McNeil Partners has already been collected. The second intersection, project identified with this consultant services agreement will be the intersection improvement at Metromont Road and Rosedale Drive. This intersection improvement has had multiple documented crashes and is located immediately adjacent to the Norfolk Southern Railroad. Addition, there is a lack of dedicated turn lanes at the intersection, and this hampers capacity at the intersection, particularly when the railroad is preempted and is active. This project will provide preliminary engineering to improve the radiuses and add turn lanes at the intersection and improve both safety and capacity and efficiency. This location is on the current sponged list of projects. And then the third improvement within this consultant services agreement would be the intersection improvement project at Metromont Road and Angum Road, and this actually is just going to be utilized to help improve the radiuses at that intersection. Currently, vehicles that turn from Angum onto Metromont track off the road and are just tearing the existing shoulders up. This intersection today has significant rutting and is aligned at a skewed angle with Angum Road. Again, Metromont Road is located within Post Three, and the department would like to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize the chairman into entering into a contract with RK&amp;K in the amount of $129,268.56 for preliminary engineering design. If anyone has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Chuck, didn't you want a two-lane roundabout there? Can you change all that and put a two-lane roundabout?
We can look at it. How about that?
Any questions? Thanks again, Erica.
Yes, sir.
Item number 10 is discuss action to approve funding of Holt Consulting Company Work Authorization titled "Sanitary Sewer Line Improvements and Existing Sanitary Sewer Line Test," Design Phase Services at the Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport in the amount not to exceed Post Two, and Mr. Green's going to report.
Thank you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read through the backup provided...
Hopefully, you've had a chance to read through the backup provided by Terry Tibbetts, our airport director. Just a little summary for you, and I'll be glad to take your questions, and Terry's here also to take any questions you have. As you all probably know, and everybody probably in this room knows, the Technical College System of Georgia is managing design and construction of our new aviation academy, and they, in coordination with the airport and meeting with staff, have let us know that they plan to tentatively award a construction contract as early as spring '22, so not too far off. This drives the need for sewer availability at their location, either by the time they awarded the construction contract or shortly after. Terry, his group, has met with the city and myself and others to look at different options for sewer. There's both a temporary route we were looking at and some permanent, long-term solutions for the airport. In going through this with the city, they've been very helpful. They have extended an indication that they will allow us to convert existing sewer lines on the property to a city-approved and maintained facility once we complete certain items for them. So part of this project is to convert that existing infrastructure wherever possible to, to facilitate sewer outfall. But there is also a 2,100-foot gap between the existing sewer that the city's brought to the airport property, and as you all know, there's a gap of a little, a little hill and a little valley off, between the terminal and, and the ridge where the sewer line ends, and this proposal will prepare a separate set of plans to do a standalone project to construct that sewer extension. But the alignment of that sewer will be in coordination with the ultimate plan for the airport, so that it will not have to be relocated. We've looked at the feasibility of that, and there is some good bit of cuts and fills involved, but we've determined that's going to be our best option versus spending money on, on temporary options just to meet the school schedule. Bottom line, we need the sewer to the airport, as, as the airport will hopefully begin to grow in general aviation now, and it will just need to be, provide a little bit sooner than probably our, our ideal schedule would be as far as other work going on that, that Terry's involved with. He is using his existing consulting engineer, Holt, who's provided this proposal. There's also surveying, testing, and as-building and things like that involve, that go into this cost for the, for this work overall, and it will be directly managed by Terry's group with support from us with administration and funding. That's why we're here today. So we're here to ask for funding of this amount, 47, I think it was, and some change, and be glad to answer any questions you have. I'd like to add one other thing, too, because we have talked about a lot of grant opportunities out at the airport. This sewer would be in line for some grants coming to us pretty soon. We hope that will kick in for the construction cost. So right now, at this point, without knowing all the details, all we're asking is to go ahead and advance the design work we need, put us in line, and be shovel-ready. That's the word of the day here lately with grants, is to get, get shovel-ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And finally, item number 11 is discuss action to approve house plans submitted by Smith Douglas Homes for compliance with the Sweetwater Overlay District building design requirements for a zoning case 2007-04-Z located in Post 3, and Ms. Lippman to report.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. I'm bringing a new opportunity for board approval to you today. If you recall, back in the spring, we made some amendments to a overlay district that was formerly called the Low Density Quality Residential Overlay District, that we changed the name to the Sweetwater Overlay District. This district covers the Sweetwater sewer basin in the southern portion of the county, and we have received the first, one of the changes we made, the old overlay sort of had a 12 lists of house characteristics that you needed to pick six of, and I have to go back to my running joke that 1986 called and it wants its bay windows back. Some of the characteristics were a little dated, so we changed it so that for any incoming rezoning case, they would need to submit house plans that would be approved with the rezoning, but in the southern part of the county, we do have several rezoned properties that have already received approval, so there was language put in there that they would need to submit house plans to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. As a reminder, this is the location of case number 2007-4-Z, and this is a copy of the site plan. We received 11 color elevations from Smith Douglas for these properties. The backup has the 11 names and the associated square footage of those. I do have a copy of all of, sort of a slideshow of the house plans, if you want me to run those, but staff did take a look at these, and of the 11 submitted, staff recommends approval of Avery Caldwell, Elie James, McGinnis, and Oakley house plans, provided that they are bricked on all three sides. This is not listed as a condition in the overlay district right now, but looking at the house plans, we thought that this would be preferable, and builders should note that vinyl siding is not permitted, and the fourth side should be wood stucco or cement siding, and we requested some additional architectural details just to enhance those elevations, and I will be happy to either run the, I'll just start this. This is a selection of some of the house plans that they submitted to us, and while this is running, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Go ahead.
How does the layout compare to the original layout of the zoning, what they brought to us originally to what it ended up being now?
I don't think when this was zoned, this, this is a zoning that was submitted in 2007 but was not approved until 2019. It had been tabled for a long time. The low-density overlay went into effect in February of 2007, which kind of coincides when this was initially presented, so I don't think they submitted any house plans initially.
Can you refresh me on why we dropped the requirement for six of the design features?
I think we just thought it would be better to have actual house plans that would be approved. We do have, in addition to this property, probably three or four other properties that have been rezoned and would have, would currently require to be met by the overlay, and we just thought, I mean, styles change. I don't think 15 years ago that farmhouse had crossed anybody's visual house plan palette, and to kind of accommodate changes in styles and other changes that may come about, some of the six characteristics, some of them sort of repeated. There were several that dealt with the roof line, so I think we just thought it would be better to actually see what they actually wanted to build.
Other questions? Thanks much, Ann. Terry, I'm just going to ask you, did you come just for item number 10, or I think maybe I'm missing, okay. In next meeting, we're going to get the update. Okay. That's the conclusion of regular business. No one has signed up for public participation in non-agenda items. We do have a need to go into executive session for pending and potential litigation in real estate, so I'll entertain a motion that we do that.
Make a motion to go in executive session for pending and potential litigation in real estate.
A motion by Commissioner Stover, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry's 5-0, we stand adjourned for executive session.
Make a motion, we're here.
A motion adjourned by Commissioner Hart, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kaker, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's 4-0 and 0. We stand adjourned.